It is 7:01. It's Wednesday, the 11th of May 2016, 7pm. This is the annual meeting of the town council. Looking at the agenda, item number one is election of chairman. To elect a chairman of the council who should also be the mayor of Oakham for the forthcoming municipal year. Who wants to stand for being chairman? Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Adam Low.
Okay, one nomination for Low.
I'll second that.
Nomination of Low by, uh, seconded by Michael. Anybody else wants to be nominated? Anybody else?
We have got seconded.
We've got seconded, we've got Michael, yeah, okay, right, okay. All those in favour of the... Okay, that's, um... Eleven, uh, ten. And one abstention or one against?
I don't know, Joyce is smiling. Well, Adam knows what I said before, I'm abstaining.
Abstaining?
Yeah.
No, thank you, Martin, that's, um... That's, that's a very positive thing, actually. You could have voted against.
We are trying to get on.
Rather than a adjourned meeting go out, um, I'll sign this blank paperwork and you can fill my name in afterwards.
I'll put mine on it. I wouldn't sign anything blank. You just sign your resignation then.
So the, uh, so the declaration has been signed during the meeting.
I'm sorry, Paul.
Continue on with the meeting, uh... So, item two is declaration of acceptance, that has now been confirmed. Apologies, there are no apologies because everybody's present, um, so we don't need to include any absences. Declarations of interest, members are asked to declare if required any disposable, pecuniary interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda and any other interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Anybody got anything they want to disclose, declare? No. And of course, members as always, always reminded to inform the clerk of any changes in their register of members' interests. Item five is the election of a vice-chairman. This is to elect a vice-chairman of the council who should also be the deputy mayor of Oakham for the forthcoming municipal year. So, we're looking for candidates, uh... Oh, right, okay, I would like to nominate Martin. Right, so Stan has nominated Michael Haley, which has been seconded by Vince. Joyce, were you going to nominate?
No, I was going to ask Michael if he was willing to stand first of all.
I'm gonna... Uh, is there anybody else that wants to be considered? Martin?
Nominate myself.
Martin's nominated himself. Does anyone want to second Martin's nomination?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Vince, thank you Vince.
Thank you Vince.
Okay, what we do is we will, uh...
Can I ask for a recorded vote, please, so that we don't have to put hands up and embarrass each other?
Right, okay, uh, we would need a second councillor to agree to a signed vote, I believe.
Yeah.
And then you'd have to go and do it, so does any, do we, do any sec, any councillor want to second Martin's request for seal vote?
It's not secret, it's just that it's written...
A signed vote, no?
No.
Okay, well, we're not going to go for the sealed vote. What we're going to do is we'll take each one in turn, and you can, I will say that councillors can only vote for one of the two. So if you vote for candidate A, you can't vote for candidate B, that's how it's it.
Sorry, who's, who proposes a seconded Michael?
Stan, Stan, uh...
Vince, seconded.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Okay, and then Martin, you nominated yourself.
And Vince, seconded, did it, did it, did it.
Seconded, did it, okay.
Well, I'd second to people.
Yes, you can second as many people as you want. Uh, okay, so, all those in favour of Michael Haley? Uh, right, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten for Michael Haley.
We don't need to vote on me, I withdraw my nomination.
Yeah, we've got you down, yes. Uh, so are you not voting, you abstaining?
I withdraw my nomination, easy.
Except, but what, with regard to Michael Haley though, would you?
I'll abstain.
Abstain, just abstain, so basically, Michael Haley's in it.
That's only because I put my name forward.
Marking him withdrawn now. Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations, Martin.
Let me get an official end, a beginning, not end, beginning of your photograph. Normally that would happen, wouldn't it? Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair, Chairman, has the deputy mayor not had a necklace?
Uh, well, we, we both brought our boxes in, actually, so it's in the office.
Chucked, chucked.
He should get it.
So, well, Alison will get it while I just go through the next bit, because, uh, item six on here, because we took this from a year where we changed, uh, the declaration of acceptance of office to receive councillor, councillors' declarations, because it was a new year the other year, this item was put onto the agenda, but in actual fact, we don't need it. So, the proposal is that we, um, disregard item six, would you agree? Proposal that we disregard item six, seconded by Vince, so I propose we discard six. Seconded by Vince, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much. So now we're going to go on to the minutes, which is item seven... The minutes of the meeting of the council on Wednesday the 27th of April. Anybody got any comments or objections? Uh, looking for somebody to, um, propose to approve by Vince, seconded by Joyce, all those in favour? Obviously Jasmine's going to abstain because she wasn't here, so everybody else, that's, yeah? Got that? So everyone's all, yeah, do you want that, you don't want that, do you? No. I'll sign please. Oh, sorry, I didn't, I missed you.
I might be a bit premature, because I was going to say that, um, councillors' question, it doesn't need to be answered at the meeting, because the information's coming through freedom of information.
All right, okay.
So they don't need my question either.
Right, we'll clarify that when we get through to the second one.
I sent a reminder. Don't worry.
Okay.
When are you going to send me those?
You've got it, have you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, no, that's done, yeah.
Okay, um, item eight on the, uh, agenda is councillors' questions, um, we don't need to cover that now, because there's an FMI request, we'll put it instead. Are you happy with that?
Yes, yes, it was because I was a bit, wasn't sure whether it was going to be answered, but it is going to be answered, so it's fine.
Uh, number nine on the agenda is members' reports, and it's received reports. Now, have a look around the table, I know, Prince, you saw what I'm saying, it could not be that, did you, if you've come through that? Right, anybody else have anything they want to mention? Have a look around, any reports, any note? No, that's good, good, that's good, well, that's, well, that's... Okay, shall we, shall we break there, then? It's quick while you're there, though.
Yeah.
Uh, well, that's brilliant, up to that point. Is there a Clark's report, Alison?
Yeah, did you, I think he's got that.
Has anybody got a copy of the Clark's report?
Yeah.
Uh, do, uh, do we need to read it out, or do we?
Has anybody got any questions?
Anybody got any questions on the Clark's report? No? Brilliant, uh, I'll just, okay, thank you for that, oh, shoot.
There is one thing, uh, sorry, on the Clark's report. Um, I can't remember the complicated word, but I have issue with this, that we don't tender, and it's split into two parts, so that they don't have to tender. And I, I was hoping that we were going to get that sorted, because it's actually an unlawful word. Not the words are unlawful, but for a council to split the painting of the town's benches, so that someone doesn't have to tender was not appropriate.
Okay, I, okay, I believe, yeah, I believe in that, in fact, that there is, there is a, there is a document coming on to the, uh, there's a agenda coming on to the council regarding painting of benches anyway, but these are...
It says it's starting, so...
No, that's the benches in Cuts, Coast and Royces. The one for the High Street will be coming on the next council, because it's, it's for you to approve. Because it's over a thousand pounds.
So the amount of benches on Royces are such a small amount, it wouldn't exceed an amount where it has to go to council. The amount of benches on Royces are the same, but then there's another bunch of benches which would cost more money.
The High Street.
Oh, so it is going to come to council.
So it will be a general, I should come on to do that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Uh, just for clarity, any members of the council, when they're making declarations, if they choose or do not wish to stand, right, that would not be necessary for the opening of the meeting. I'll waive that standing order, where it's more comfortable for people to remain seated. Declarations by the public? No?
I think you scared them off last week.
Yeah, it's a bit, um, okay. I think we can have a meat of it now, I guess. Uh, right, item twelve is the appointment of standing committees and subcommittees. Now, everybody's read the paper, hopefully. Now, there are... There's, there's the planning and parks committee, which is all members, that, that's the second meeting of the month. Uh, there are, there is the stamping committee, and then there is the planning subcommittee. So what we do, um... The decisions will be to decide whether the current committee structure is suitable for the council, and agree on any changes they may require. Then they'll be to agree on the membership of the changes. If nobody's coming off a committee, then they're staying on, then we will vote, we'll vote that they will be staying on, basically. And if there's gaps, then people will be nominated and voted on, and then we'll be voting to confirm that, so that's all going to work. So somehow you will get through this. Um, to decide whether the current terms of reference, yeah, there, okay, Martin, you want to say something?
I don't have to first, but, um, I think this is a perfect opportunity to sort out the mess, and I don't believe we need a working group. A lot of time was spent on trying to restructure the council, and we achieved nothing apart from a lot of fighting. Um, the middle tier of this council causes a lot of issues. Um, I'm not looking to any particular committee or group or anything, but I think this evening could be a perfect opportunity for us to restructure on the base of bringing back a team, that there is a full council meeting and a planning meeting. And the rest of the, I, and yes, we need a staffing committee as well, but any other subcommittee or working group at this stage should be scrapped, until there are proper terms of references, and a new year, we can move forward as if, with a fresh vision. So, obviously, other people might want to talk about it, but I would like at some stage to make a proposal, which would be based on the fact that the parks and planning becomes planning only, and we have a main council meeting and a staffing committee only at this stage. That would be my proposal, when you're ready to accept it.
Okay, I'll look over to Tracy.
Uh, once it's been proposed, I will say I won't support that, and the reason why is because this should be a strategic meeting. This is where the strategic action happens, the working groups are where, it's more operational. If we were to bring absolutely everything to council, we would be here all night, five, six hours.
Okay.
And I'm going to, I haven't finished, and, and, and actually, the, the working groups are there to kind of do the groundwork to feed back into a strategic group.
Okay.
That's, that's the...
All right, I'm going to go to Joyce, then I'll go to Stan.
I have to say, I've been on news on this council a long time, as you well know, and things like porches, um, verandas, and things like that, where it's a delegated power to the clerk. Now we've got, I don't believe I need to sit here, and that's why the subcommittee's working. I don't want to sit here and make a decision on, on a, a simple thing like a porch. I have not finished. The other thing is, uh, changing from planning, can I just go on to the membership of the staffing committee? It's recommended that this committee should have four members, and please, can I nominate the deputy mayor?
Right, okay, I'll, I'll come to that, and I'm going to stand, having a work with everyone.
Tell me a shortcut this.
You can't.
Because I think all we've got to do is have a vote. I absolutely agree with Tracy. I think if we have a vote, then we can move on, I think we're just wasting time.
Okay, well, I'm going to come back round to Martin. Can I come back round to Peter, because Peter's got something badly to say, but, Peter?
What I want to put forward is, when I first joined this council, which is only about, you know, two or three months ago, um, we did discuss this, and there was a paper on the table.
Yeah.
And we did say that, at this meeting, we would discuss that paper, but I think it's gone out in the wash somewhere, it's sort of, it's gone, it's gone adrift. And I, I think we need to do something, because otherwise, we have subcommittees and working groups, and it, it's important that we know exactly what they're doing, what their terms of reference are, um, what their powers are, if any, um, and it needs to be clear cut, and it's, to me, it's a bit woolly at the moment.
Okay, I'm glad you said that, I'm going to come back round to Martin, then I'll come to you, then I'll watch it sound.
I, I think some of the people are misunderstanding what I was saying. Um, I'm not saying that everything should come to council. At the moment, we don't have clearly defined, in my opinion, a purpose for some of the groups in the way going forward. You know, one group has been working on a project for two years. That's my issue. Now, planning, and porches as is mentioned, if we have just a planning meeting on its own, members don't have to go to that, in the same as parks and planning. But the main meeting is where we can't decide tonight on what somebody has just said, just make a decision. We're being asked here to decide whether the current committee or structure is suitable. So we should be able to discuss it, but I agree, we can't go on all night, but I see the opportunity is that we need to start afresh on things. Whether that means agreeing at another meeting that this committee is set up, that committee is set up, with proper terms and references, then that would be good. I don't want to see the situation from my point of view, is that it continues in the way it's been going. It's not going to be helpful, so I'm not, I'm not trying to say dump everything on the council, that gets my points across.
Okay, no, I, I know where you're coming from, and I've, there is an answer to this, isn't there?
What I was going to suggest is pretty much the, all the same, is once we've established who wants to be where, then that's whoever they are, the two or three or the four, get together, meet, have some terms of reference, share them. There'll be tweaks, I'm sure, because we're not, we're not perfect, and we'll not get it right straight away. And that then will underpin what, what we do as a, as a working group, what, what, yeah, what decisions we can make, what our remit is, and what actually what are, what the outcomes are, because we haven't really got any outcomes, what is it we want to achieve from each working group? Um, and actually, what I was going to say is, maybe some of them don't necessarily need to be a, um, formal working group. Sometimes things just need a small test and finish group, something that just needs to be for three months or for six months, and then it's gone.
That's how working groups work. Now, what, let me try and wrap this up, because, um, having listened to what everybody's said, and I'm not really going to open this back up. The idea is that a lot of what we have in place is what we now class as our structure. Peter is alluded to a point where, when we get to item eighteen, if we get to that point, when we get to item, I actually form a working group that looked at restructure. So, the suggestion is from tonight, because to try and do a restructure in a two-hour process as a whole council, it would not happen, because there's too many opinions. It has to be a working group that would work on it, and hopefully, we'll be able to get to that point on item eighteen. So the objective here is, is that this is what we currently have, this is the as-is, if you like, this is where we currently stand, and this is what we accept. And we make sure we develop, we actually agree to set up that working group to analyse whether it will work. Because we can always come back and abolish some of these working groups, and go, yeah, we tried it again, it's not worked. The working group will come up with Plan C, amended B, whatever it might be, and we, we take it on from there. So, I will be looking to adopt or retain these, these committees. Martin, last word before I start looking at the...
Yeah, I just wanted to also point out, the reason why I'm not happy that we just accept this is because it says here, the staffing committee has no delegated authority.
Which I think is an absolute...
And that it is in standing orders, you've had the most recent thing to sort out the clock. So, as it stands, what I think would be a wonderful idea is that maybe this evening we could actually appoint some people to look into this, so this can come back to the next meeting, whether...
We'll do that eighteen. Okay, so what I'm going to do, thank you, Martin, I, I get where you're coming from, and I...
Because we can't approve something which contradicts our standing orders.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is, looking at this document, the first thing I'm looking is that the, uh, and I'm going to say this one at a time, and I'm going to help guide the council on this. All members of the council sit on the planning and parks committees. So the first thing we've got to decide, is to decide whether the current committees, actually, it's three current committees' structure, is suitable for the council, until we get to that revision point. So, do we agree that we work with the correct, Vince?
Propose.
Proposal we work with this current committee structure, seconded by Stan. All those in favour? Unanimous, right, okay, brilliant, so that, that's, that's the first hurdle. Now, the first one of these is planning and parks, and at the moment, all members are on planning and parks. So, I'm going to say that the proposal is, because I know that we're sticking with the structure, but I will make it very clear, the proposal is that the councils, all councils sit on the planning and parks committee.
Yes.
Seconded by Vince, all those in favour? Okay, so that committee stays as it is. The second one on here is the staffing committee. Now, it's recommended that this committee should have at least four members. Now, at the moment, it's council alone, Lucas and Stubbs, so we are short. Now, Joyce has already said that she believes that there should be at least one of the member on there, to make it up to four, which is the deputy, which is Michael Haley, how they, which does fit in quite heavily, Haley. Michael H, uh, brilliant. So, so, so it's been proposed that Mikey is on. Is there anybody else that would like to be on the staffing committee? Because it could be that we could go to five, so make sure that if we have a quorum problem, anybody...
It's at four, yeah.
Oh, it's at four, but we could, we could, we could change the numbers to five, we could change it to five.
No, I think five should have so...
Okay, does anybody else have an opinion on that?
Have we got four people?
We will have four, we'll have one, two, three, four.
Okay, that's...
Well, okay, right.
I mean, that, because there's too many...
No, that's fine, but there seems to be a bit of a question mark over it. So we've got a proposal for Michael H from Joyce, which has been seconded by Stan, although he's in favour that Michael Haley comes on to that, that's unanimous, by looks of it. And the other three are, also stay on there, so the proposal is that Adam, Joyce and Stan also on the committee. Proposal by Vince, seconded by...
If we've done Michael Haley separate, can we not do the other people? Because I can't vote for some of those people.
We can do this separately, right, the, uh, we propose that Adam Low is on the staffing, which stays on staffing.
Do you want to have proposed by?
Proposed by me, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? Oh, that's unanimous. Uh, proposed, Vince has proposed, and Joyce is on there, seconded by Peter. All those in favour of Joyce? Are you abstaining, Martin?
Nine against.
So that's everybody, Martin is against.
Does he want his name recorded?
Was it admitted?
Yes, there's no problem.
That would help the member of the public that was here earlier on, and the, uh, looking for Stan. Proposed by Vince, seconded by Peter, all those in favour? Uh, Martin, you've abstained?
Against.
Again, so everybody's in favour, but Martin's against, so that means the staffing is sorted as well, thank you very much. The planning subcommittee has four members, is four members enough? Peter, Michael, Martin?
I, I...
Come ahead, mate, just a wee...
I, I've witnessed that that probably isn't enough, and then it's not being quorum, and, um, and I think that...
Quorum is three, everybody, but...
It should be represented, it should be represented by each ward, although we're allowed to go now and have our input, but I, I think it would be better if it was represented by
Okay, more.
A spread of all the wards, that's more people on it, because, and also for training.
Yeah.
Can I say, I don't wish to stand on that committee?
Okay, so at the moment...
On this planning, so...
At the moment, we have Vince, are you happy to stay on there, by the way? Good, but we've got Vince, we've got Michael Elliott.
Can I propose Vince, because he's a good chairman on that.
So, yeah, we'll come to that in a minute, so, fine, Michael. Right, uh, Michael Haley is on there, are you happy to stay on there, Michael Haley?
Michael Haley, stop, Michael Haley.
Sorry, Michael Elliott, Michael Elliott.
Oh dear, how is he doing?
Uh, Martin, I've been seconded. Michael Elliott, are you happy to stay on?
Yes.
So what's that, two, three and Peter?
That's three, we'll come to, we'll come to voting in a minute, and seconds in the proposal. Peter's, you're on it, aren't you, Peter?
Yes.
You happy to stay on it?
Yes.
I, I would be happy to go back on it if we had the training. That's the thing I find that's impossible, is that we're not trained.
Are you proposing yourself, Martin, then? Go on, you know your way.
I'm proposing Vince, uh, but I need some, I don't want to be leaving it, because we're, we don't know what we're doing again.
Okay, um, I'll propose Martin goes on to the planning subcommittee then. Now, do we need a fifth person on there?
Yeah, I suppose Jasmine goes on there.
Jasmine, happy with that? Brilliant, top star, so we've got, all right.
I'm just going to, you want to vote for Vince then?
Yeah, what we do, right, we've got Vince, who's been proposed by Martin, and is seconded by, um, Adam. We've got Michael Elliott, who's been proposed by
I'll propose.
Martin, and is seconded by Vince. We're doing those all together, that's all right. Peter and I, who's proposed by Jasmine, and is seconded by Vince. Martin, who's proposed by Adam, and is seconded by Michael Elliott?
James?
Uh, Vince, Vince, sorry, right, Martin, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Martin Brooks is proposed by Adam, seconded by Vince.
I'll propose Jasmine.
And Jasmine is proposed by, I think it's proposed by Vince, but I'll take you as the seconder. So that's all we have, so there are all the proposers and seconders, all those in favour? Is everybody?
I'm going as that, four.
Four, uh, five, it's five.
So I'm missing Peter, who's, who?
Peter was, um...
Jasmine.
Jasmine and Vince.
Okay, that's five then.
Yeah, although, so that's, it's all proposals for all, that's it, I'm all those in favour? That's unanimous, right, okay. We've got, that's a pretty, have we got that?
That was quite simple, I suppose.
That was quite straightforward.
That's the first one.
It just, yeah.
I don't know what he's...
It sounds complicated, but it's not, right, uh, appoint a tree warden, who wants to be tree warden? Anybody?
This reminds me of a parishal church council.
Unless it's any, Joyce, we all know that you know what you're doing with trees, so, proposed by Stan, the councillor Lucas is tree warden, seconded by Martin?
Yes.
All those in favour? Unanimous?
Does Joyce want to be tree warden?
Do you want to be tree warden?
Can I, can I just say that the tree warden and the clerk will be extremely busy in the next few weeks with a, a report from symbiosis, and that will have to be sorted pretty soon, because because, uh, we'll have to bring it to the next council, because there are some dangerous trees. Can I sort of just, uh, minute that, because I am worried about those trees that we have talked about.
But the, uh, the tree warden is Joyce Lucas, and she has a mountain to climb, or a tree to climb, as it appears.
Is what everybody aware that there's a...
No, that's all right, but it's, um, we have got a, a large tree commitment, I suppose. Uh, item fourteen is the neighbourhood plan, this is to consider reporting, make decisions as appropriate. Um, and it says here to organise expenditure. Can I pass this over to councillor Michael Haley to... Michael, has anybody, he's had on this, or not?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Someone just can come to lay their chair, I'm getting your name right.
Don't get pissed, you want to...
Yeah, I think we're going to come to that. Uh, Peter?
Yes, it's a follow-on from the town meeting, really. Um, the neighbourhood plan area includes, uh, whole of Barleyford Parish and a small section of Ableton. Would it not be sensible that this is, uh, the, the boundary for the town as well? In other words, we don't get a conflict in the future or confusion. I know it's not decision-making time at the moment, but I'm putting it forward as a, as, as, you know, to relax and help with that.
So, I'm not, I'm not quite...
You mean Barleyford being a fifth ward of Oakham?
Yes.
It's the, the, the neigh, that's, that's been dealt with by the county council. This is the neighbourhood plan boundary, which has nothing actually to do with the town...
Appreciate that, yes, yes. Yes, I heard your response earlier on, but I'm just making a plea, that can we not, as a town, push that as the option? I know people are voting on it and put their views forward, but I think it's going to be confusing if we get two different boundaries.
I don't think we can, we can't do that with the, that falls outside the neighbourhood plan.
Okay, couldn't, I mean, did you want to make a name, just, just double checking itself anyway, to...
I didn't, I do know that.
Oh, right, okay, big problem, right.
But we're a town, aren't we?
We are, we are a town. To, I mean, I would think, I would think to move that forward, I mean, I, I think it would still be worth having a conversation at a council, like.
Yeah.
If that is okay, just to, it's clearly is an issue. Martin, what else have I got, some word, was to monitor?
No, I was sort of slightly moving on, but I wanted to, I, I wanted to sort of perhaps suggest, because now that it is Barleyford's plan as well, that perhaps the neighbourhood plan, it could go back to them, that it became Oakham and Barleyford neighbourhood plan. It's just a...
The, the, the important thing is that... The, the, the important thing is that the residents of both Oakham and Barleyford are included in the development of the plan. The steering group does have a, a, a member who lives in Barleyford.
Oh, that's good, too.
Um, working group, which is about to be set up, will be taken from everyone. Yeah, every, everybody is invited, and we're making big efforts to include everybody. So, it's not, it's not Barleyford and Oakham, it's, it's a land base. If we think about it, it's, it's, the, the boundary is aligned on the magic, not to the middle of the college.
Would, would you like a proposal that we approve this wonderful, this is extraordinary, and I think there's a print in there of perhaps normal with council business, and now things that we should have an extra zero or two on there, but, um, the, the website thing, would you, are you looking for a proposal for that?
We are looking for, yeah, from the recommendations on the bottom of the yellow page, or the second yellow page, um, recommendations, the council notice steering group, that the council approves the development and commission of the MPSG website, um, and at the sum of, is it only sixty-one ninety-two plus the eighty for Wits combo package and thirty-nine? Yeah?
So, I, I, I would like to see that up and running as quick as possible, because it wasn't until Jasmine put on about Friday's, um, event, I had no clue that that was so publicity for events is is waned a bit. So, the website for your, um, looking for working group.
Well, it is, this is an invitation. People, the.
Yeah, I know it is, but I'm saying the publicity was poor, so I'm hoping that your website would be improved.
It needs publicity, the people who.
Well, it does, if you want people to come and join, it, it needs publicity.
I think we're getting off track from what this agenda.
No, I'm just saying that I'm happy to propose that, because that will help with the publicity if you have a website.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, Martin is pro, pro.
I'm proposing. I'm proposing that paragraph, the sums of sixty-one ninety-two plus the eighty for Wits combo package and.
Okay, so, proposal on the table. Yeah, so, yeah, what, what the council notice steering group progress, can we include that in your, in your proposal?
If you like, yeah.
No, it's just that it's all part of the same thing. The rec, the proposal is that the recommendations of the working group are, A, to, uh, the council notice steering group's progress, and secondly, uh, the, the, the website thing is set up and the expenditure of sixty-one ninety-two, thirty-nine-eight is released. So, that's a proposal from Martin based on recommendations, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? Unanimous, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, I would say we try and keep, I know it's easy sometimes or just to fall off track, but, um, if it's important, at least stick on.
Oh dear, now we've got this long.
Uh, ooh. Right, this could be interesting. Representation on other organisations, um. Oakham Town Council, for the benefit of new councils, the Oakham Town Council has representatives, humans, us, on outside bodies, and we sometimes go there just as observers, sometimes we participate. Um, but these are organisations historically perhaps that we've been asked to be represented on. So, I'm going to go through each one at a time. If people want to stay on there, they can say they want to stay on there, and then we'll vote and agree that at that point, so, because that way.
Can we put new names?
So, and we'll put new names in as we go. So, I'm going to go from the top. So, uh, number one is the Rutland's Citizens Advice Bureau, or Citizens Advice, C A. At the moment, there is one vacancy. Does anybody want to go on to the C A? But we put another, then. Just, right, um, you can propose Jasmine by Michael, are you happy to do that? So, Jasmine has been pro, proposed.
She'll say it.
She'll be bored. Jasmine will be really bored. She just sits here in the corner.
Seconded by Vince, all those in favour, Jasmine get on the C A?
Yes, she wants it.
That's unanimous, thank you very much.
It's very boring.
So, that's proposed, seconded and voted, that was, wasn't it? Have you got all that? You've got, uh, who proposed?
Martin.
Uh, Martin and, and Martin and Vince, brilliant, okay. Uh, the next one is the trustee of the Victoria, trustees of the Victoria Hall, do they only have one? Yeah.
Yes.
Um. Martin?
I've looked into this, and one of the ladies we're employing is looking into Victoria of all things. We should actually have three. And it should actually be for the whole term of four years. We shouldn't actually be selecting someone each year. A purpose of a trustee is a legal position, which should go through the turn of office. That's what I've seen on the deed.
It should be the constitution.
It's on their deed of covenant, which is available on the, um, Charity Commission's website, so.
If you've got consent to just read the council, I'll, there's all of us going on it, but we don't. Um, okay, well, so at the moment, then, we currently have Jasmine on there, is that correct, Jasmine?
If she wants to stay, then I would propose her, because that keeps continuity, but.
Right, so at the moment, we've got Jasmine, uh, Martin's agreed to the fact there should be two others. Does anybody else?
There's a trusted Victoria Hall, that's not actually the case, I've changed it to one.
All right, okay, so, right.
But it's, excuse me, chairman, but that's not what the legal document says on one. They can't just change the deed of covenant.
Right, well, at the moment, at the moment, we, uh, the, uh, from what I've heard, and this is.
I don't, I'm not going to, don't worry, I'm not putting my name forward. I don't want to be involved in that lot.
No, that's fine, if we can.
But I just want it done properly.
Do you mind if I talk?
Sorry, chairman.
You're talking in the.
Sorry, chairman.
Right, so we're going to stick with one, which is councillor Jasmine Hopkins, who's happy to stay on there. So, proposal, then it's proposed, seconded by, uh, Sally Anne, all those in favour? Uh, unanimous, well done. So, you got that, it was proposed by, it's for Sally Anne, brilliant. Oakham United Charities, it's, there's two, are you coming off this? We'll stand on it, Joyce, so I can remember.
I, I, I'm coming off it, and I propose perhaps Sally Anne and Martin might like to go on it. I see there's two vacancies there.
Okay, interesting.
I don't know whether, I haven't asked.
Anybody else got any comments or observations? Would you be, so would you be?
Could you tell me what it is? I haven't got a clue.
Just briefly.
Is this the one that Mrs Clifton runs? No, because that's the hall, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's the memorial.
No, this is, this is Richard Adson, Adams, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it just, I, I.
And it's only once, it's only once a year, and they give out money.
Little grants, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, right, thank you. Proposed by Joyce, that Sally Anne goes on there. Martin, there's, there's another vacancy, would you?
Yeah, I know, I know what it is, I'm happy to, I'm not going to put my name for something, I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, I'm going to do, so, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's see if we can get through this without talking, otherwise we'll take your chain away. Councillor Haley.
They have been proposed.
Proposed by Joyce is Sally Anne and Martin Brooks, a seconder for Vince, for Sally Anne, and Tracy for Martin Brooks, all those in favour? Okay, that's unanimous.
And that's the memorial.
Right, can we try and, I really appreciate it, we could keep the chat down, because it'd be. Um, meetings seem to be facilitated by Rutland County Council, um, trying to organise what a strategic view of the council should be in both now and what they should be working towards in, say, ten years' time. Brilliant. So, we had an all-day conference on it about three months ago, um, and, um, say, it gets quite grandiose in its, in its, um, aspiration. Okay, which perhaps leaves you wondering how this is going to be converted into actuality, but it's probably necessary. Okay, so you're happy to stay on it? Yep, good man.
But I was, I was actually going to, if Michael didn't want to, I was preempting it, but I was going to suggest it would be something for Tracy if she was interested, because it's.
Yeah, I'll come to the one I want.
No, all right, okay, so we've got one there. Proposal then, that, uh, Michael Elliott stays on there from Vince, seconded by Martin Brooks, all those in favour? That's unanimous as well, congratulations. Quite a prize-giving, but without any. Um, five is the, um, L S P Culture and Leisure Group. Joyce, you're on that, are you coming on or staying off?
Staying on.
Staying on. So, if there's nobody else on there, proposal that, for Vince, seconded by Peter Ives, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. I'm not going to say anything, that's the overall majority. Uh, trustees a little more, oh, beg your pardon, Oakham Blue, Joyce is currently on that, we only have one member. Are you standing on, Joyce?
Yes.
Yes, so proposal from Vince, seconded by Tracy, all those in favour, that Joyce stays on Oakham Blue? That's ten. Martin, are you abstaining or against?
I'm against.
Against?
Do I admit it?
Please.
I made her laugh.
Do you want to admit it, Martin?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I've got you on that, it might be down.
I have nothing to hide.
Uh, trustees of the Memorial Institute, which is, uh, apparently there are, should be three representatives on there. At the moment, we've got Vince.
And Joyce.
And.
Um, really?
Oh, sorry, no, disregard, I'm talking rubbish. Uh, there, there should be two people on there. Trustees of the Memorial Institute, we've got Vince, and I believe Joyce is on there.
No, no, let's, let's just get it right. It's Vince, and I'm a standby if Vince can't go. Is that right?
No.
Yeah, oh, I'm, I should be on that, but I'm not going to be on it.
A trustee has to be a trustee.
Right, okay, so trustees of the Memorial Institute, I think there's two.
Can I just, please, do, clear that up? It was, uh, about six months ago, I think, when they asked for another member.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, in the event of being called out, you were going to be there anyway, so that we wouldn't be unrepresented.
Oh, all right.
But Vince, Vince is on, Joyce is off, so I have one vacancy. Um, I propose that Vince stays on it, you have to stay on there, aren't you? And mine's going to second that, aren't you?
Yes.
All right, okay, so we need a, a second person to get on there.
How about Martin?
Uh, who, who, who else wants to go on the trustee of the Memorial Institute meeting?
I would like to.
Proposed, Martin's proposed by, um.
Yeah, oh, it's Martin, I'm sorry, fine.
Who, who's that proposing?
I'm just asking, if someone wants to propose me, it's probably better.
Well, I was trying to get to the bottom of that, but.
I'll propose Martin.
Proposed by Tracy, seconded by
Yeah, I'll do it.
Sally Anne, she's got round at the highest.
Okay.
All those in favour? So, that's unanimous, so.
Because that one is a bit more busy, and it's, helps a lot of local people, it's good.
First meeting's Monday.
Oh, brilliant.
Yes, it's Monday.
Mrs Clifton would be thrilled to see me.
Thank you. You, you'll go out, so, right, the, uh.
Can I propose Ja, Jasmine?
Jasmine's currently on it.
Why, I'm angry.
Jasmine's going to stay on there, proposed by Joyce.
She's the very person to be on there, I think.
Seconded by Martin.
Yes, I'll second that.
All those in favour? Everybody?
Right, because we've got an email on the next.
Yes, right, the Oakham Town Partnership, there was some confusion. It has been confirmed in email, but they do want three representatives, as they've previously had. Now, at the moment, three, that's more than four unless. So, at the moment, there's councillor Stubbs, Stan, councillor Howard, Vince, and then we need one other person, correct? Now, do Stan and Vince, you both want to stay on?
Yes.
Right, so who's going to propose Stan?
Yes.
I'll propose Stan.
By Vince, so who's going to second?
Yeah.
Proposed by Vince, seconded by Joyce. Uh, Vince is being proposed by.
Hang on, the only problem with this is that it's a Monday night meeting, so if somebody else wants to do it, I'm more than happy to step down.
You haven't, never get it, right, okay.
Yeah, we're going to look at changing the meeting night, but.
Okay, it's changing the meeting night.
Yeah, that's what I'm watching, I.
Uh, well.
I will be happy to go.
Well, let's establish then, let's just establish, guys, I don't know, we've definitely got Stan who's in the frame. Um, who else would be interested in going on this? Let's say that Vince stood down, and we needed two people. Who else would be interested in going on the Oakham Town Partnership?
I would if I can.
Sally Anne, right, okay, that's true. Sally Anne's interested.
Debating, because I'm a shopkeeper, whether I'm allowed to be on it or not.
Do you, do you, the Oakham Town Council, this is what this is all about.
The only thing, the only thing is, Sally Anne will do, declare interest. So, you won't be to take any, you won't be able to vote on anything that you can take part in discussion.
Right.
If Oakham Township was on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, that's the same.
That's the only thing, if, if they were to come for something.
Can I say that you could go on as a shopkeeper? But.
But it would be better to.
Yeah.
So, I'll propose Sally Anne.
So, Sally Anne was nominated herself, seconded by Martin.
What's this now?
This is for the town.
Yes, but is, is Sally Anne going on as a shopkeeper or as a town?
No, this, this is a town council meeting, so I figured we'd do anything town.
Question whether I was allowed.
They, they want more members from everywhere.
Right, okay, we need to focus on the town council bit. Um, now, if Vince wants, if Vince can off, is there a third person that is interested in going on? Martin?
I'd like to give it a go. They might write and say that they don't want me, but, um.
No, no, I'm sure they would.
Okay, so Martin Brooks is, are you nominating himself?
Well, I'd like someone to nominate me.
All right, well, uh, Michael will nominate you, seconded by Sally Anne. All those in favour of Martin going on to the Oakham Town Partnership? Uh, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, oh, it's unanimous, actually.
I'll get them.
I shouldn't sound surprised.
I'll get them, yeah, thank you. I'll get them to spend that twenty-six thousand pounds.
So, right, so we've now got, we've got the three people, I'm just going to seal this off then. The, just somebody proposed, we, those three people have all been done, Vince, seconded by Peter, all those in favour, that's the decision, unanimous, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, well done to, uh, Stan, and you've come off it, Vince, yeah, well done. Stan, Sally Anne and Martin.
Messes.
Yeah, she's going to be very busy like Martin.
Well, I've been asking to be busy for a while.
Okay, voluntary action Rutland, who's got one vacant, Vince, just put your hand up.
I'll propose Tracy, please.
And I'll second that.
Oh, right, okay, Sally.
I was going to do the same.
Okay, Sally.
Okay, we've had a, if, right, a proposal from Vince, that Tracy goes on the voluntary action Rutland, uh, is seconded by Sally Anne, I think.
Yeah, can be.
If there's no other, well, we'll vote on that. All those in favour? That's unanimous, you can vote yourself.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I don't think anyone else wanted a challenge.
See, I don't see the point of going out for a second one, because it's obviously been paid. Um, the Oakham Castle, so are you happy with that?
Because that one's.
Oakham Castle Restoration Project, this is one of the projects that when the castle restoration work is finished, this committee will cease to be, by the way, okay? So, that's important. And that's a task and finish. Um, and then, Vince?
Then I propose that all current members that are on that working group, sorry, Restoration Project Group, uh, I propose that they remain in post if they are happy to do so.
Anybody want to come off? Michael?
I'm fine on.
Uh, Joyce?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, we're all fine on, so propose, so we'll do this, Martin?
Second it.
Right, so proposed by Vince, that all three stay on, and all three have agreed, seconded by Martin, all those in favour? All the hands of course, and it should open the eyes, it's unanimous.
This is probably the best year for this, normally there's big fights.
Oakham Festival Committee, which is on, councillor Joyce Lucas, Joyce, are you staying on?
I'm staying on, and it's a really a task, task and finish one, because come July, uh, we start on the ground.
Okay, Vince, you proposing, yeah? Proposed, Joyce, seconded by Peter, all those in favour?
Yes.
Yes, that's unanimous, I think, yeah. Uh, the Rutland Committee for the First World War Commemoration, I'm not moving.
Has that not finished?
No, it goes on till two thousand and nineteen.
Oh, yeah, I remember, wasn't it?
Task and finish. Proposed by Michael Elliott, seconded by Vince Howard, all those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous.
I say yes, because I think he looks silly in that uniform.
House Forum Working Group, now I believe Joyce wants to come off it, don't you, Joyce?
Yeah, uh, and the reason why is, there's only two of us on this council that actually go to the parish forum. Yes, that's a fly.
I thought he's put his hand up, but I was going to say that.
And, and I think, uh, it's, it's quite a good working group.
It's fairly warm.
Um.
Oh, you mean the whole forum?
The, the, the working group that puts forward ideas of what they want on the agenda.
Yes.
And so I'm going to propose Martin goes on it, because he goes to the parish.
I missed the last one, I saw it the day after.
Yeah, uh, but, you know, he, uh, sorry, council, Martin has been to them, he knows what goes on. So, I'll come off, and I'm proposing that Martin goes on.
I'm not sure what we do.
Uh, well, if you can think of some ideas that might.
What, like, interest the other parishes that go?
It's a very good group to be on.
So, are you happy to accept that?
Yeah, I'd like to accept that, thank you, Mrs Clifton.
All those in favour? Are the assumption that everybody else wanted it? No, that's unanimous, thank you. So, that's Martin's parish forum, I'm going to cry.
Thank you.
Uh, it's, it's interesting, actually, because the parish forum, all councillors can attend the parish forum, and that would openly encourage you, especially if you're suddenly in Sonny.
Can I, I'm, I'm not, not, I'm sorry, not wanting to put pressure on Alison, but Richard did used to tell us when the, because.
Meetings.
Yeah, when it was going to happen.
What, the working group?
No, no, not the working group, because I'm sure Rutland County Council will tell me that, but when the meetings actually met. No, no, not the working group, because I'm sure Rutland County Council will tell me that, but when the meetings actually met...
Okay, yeah, what it is, is that, uh, we'll make sure that when these meetings are gonna, in actual fact, what I would say here is that all members sort of share the sort of...
Because it's very interesting, because they, they gave a nice chat the last time I went, about the community shop and all that, it was...
Barred him.
Barred him.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that, because also, there's gonna be the, um, policies, uh, the, um, working group to review the council structure. Because that's not the area, right, um, item, item sixteen is, uh, all this is, is the, um, schedule of meetings for the next year. So, I've checked them, they all are apparently, I'm just gonna...
Because it was wrong, it was wrong last year.
Can I just, uh, can I just, uh, uh, say that O T C used to be on, always on the second and the fourth Monday of the month? Uh, Wednesday of the month, I'm sorry, right? Now, the seventh of September is not the sec- second, uh, Wednesday of that month.
That's not...
Uh, the point is, of course, there isn't a fourth, there isn't a fourth Wednesday in September, and that's what I was trying to get across. So, so, that one and the one in May actually is not on, not on the agreed dates, which should be the second...
Hang on, I'm getting confused here, because that's what we're gonna do.
It's because from the tenth of August, we have a holiday.
I'm sure she means something right.
So, no, no, no.
Well, that's what I'm saying, just pointing out that it's not on the second and fourth in September. It's on the first of, is it the first and... First and third, just pointing it out, because it's a recognised fact that our meetings are on the second to, second and fourth Wednesday of each, of any month. Right, it's always been agreed.
What should this be, I'm getting confused, I don't know.
It is, after you've brought that to the council.
Right, okay, um...
On, on September, of course, which comes on the fourth, because there isn't...
Oh.
Right.
This one, yes.
Right, it was, right, it was, right, can we, um, stop talking on this side, and we'll come over to Peter on the left side, because there... The seventh of September, two thousand and sixteen, is that the first Wednesday or the second Wednesday?
First Wednesday, that is.
The twenty-eighth is the fourth, so there is a fourth, the twenty-first is the third, the seventh is the first.
Say that again.
The seventh is the first Wednesday, fourteenth is the second.
Yes, you're right.
Twenty-first is the third.
So, that's not, so that's...
So, so, what should, so really, the seventh of Sept- so, seventh of September should be the fourteenth, really, it's the second?
Yes, if you wanna follow that form, that'd be the fourteenth and the eighteenth.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, right, what we're gonna do, we're gonna change this, so that it actually runs, uh, tenth of August, fourteenth of September...
Yeah.
Twenty-eighth.
And then twenty-eighth.
And then, so then, will that work out for October then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
December's a funny as well.
Yes, it is.
Though that may be because of the Christmas holiday.
Yeah, it's a...
Yeah.
July? July the sixth?
So, September is the fourth, right?
Yeah, July the sixth is wrong.
What's just the second Wednesday in July?
Okay, this is all gonna go, I should just wait for the original to come out.
Second Wednesday, thirteenth, and then the seventh.
It was, it was the first, it was the last year's, it was just the Wednesday after, followed those original days.
Ah.
July will be the thirteenth, and then the twenty-seventh.
Do you want to?
Right, okay, you're right, okay, right, let me just say, what, I think what we need to do is that, um, that we'll, we'll defer this until the, uh, to just double check the dates in the diary. So, proposal, we defer the, uh, the meetings calendar, but, but, uh, proposed by Vince, seconded by Martin, but this is deferred and brought back at the end of the month after double checking the dates.
Yes.
Bear in mind that if we haven't done any dates, that's unanimous, by the way, we won't have a meeting.
But we should, maybe we should approve actually having a meet on for some, for the summons for the next one.
All it is, we do, that just needs rationalising to make sure, sense check, make sure that we do do the second and...
Fourth.
Second and fourth, that's awesome.
If, um...
Hmm.
Sorry.
Sorry to be finicky, but that, that was part of the agreement of the town council.
It was just that the, the following dates were changed from last week, last year's, but they were not four.
It's been deferred to just sense check it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Martin?
Is there any problem if we're not approving the calendar for just the next meeting? Because obviously, we know council meetings are summoned, then...
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, we'll make, we'll make an additional proposal in relation to this item, that the, uh, the next council meeting in May will be the...
Which is planning in Park.
Is planning in Park.
For the one in June.
Yeah, the next meeting, which will be planning in Parks in May, will be, uh, mind you, does this have to be approved before council this?
It has delegated powers at Parks and Planning to do council business.
The chair knows how to do this, this is...
Yes, just reorganise.
Um, yeah, we'll bring this back to the, uh, planning in Parks on, uh, the, uh, proposal is, is that we have the next meetings on the twenty-fifth of May, if that's a Wednesday, and it's the fourth Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
That's proposal, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? Unanimous, and by which time in the balance of the other dates will be brought back and will be confirmed?
Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to have a meeting.
Well done. Right.
That might be a good idea.
Uh, right, everybody's ready to take her, anybody got any comments, otherwise looking for a proposal to recommend this guy? Martin, is it proposal?
No.
Okay.
I, I have a slight problem at the moment, because, um, I've looked at the invoices for this, and he actually hasn't done any auditing. Um, a, a lot of the work has just been, as it's put there, for the charges of forty-five pounds an hour of discussion with councillors and the clerk. Um, I believe that when he came to us, there was a plan, and I'm, I don't think the plan has been kept to, and it's cost us now over a thousand pounds, which is, compared with previous auditors, is astronomical. And, um, so my, my thing is that if we are going to appoint this person, I would like to see that he's actually permitted to do his job. I think if someone comes here and does over eight hours of just talking to me, and then charges us at forty-five pound an hour plus mileage and everything, it's, it's inappropriate when you consider the position we're in at this stage is no better than previous year.
Right, okay, I've got a message, I'm gonna come back to Michael, who's gonna collect this?
Thank you, the internal auditor has made, it's three, I can't think of it, has made, uh, three visits to council. Part of the, part of the, to fulfill the intent of the project, we must talk to the clerk, the clerk is absent, so he's also talking to finance working group, to get information, to complete this document here, which is a long way towards completion already. Um, and that will form the basis of his internal report, which we will get in the near future. Um, as far as I'm concerned, he, he is doing his job properly, he has done his work properly, and there's a long way towards completing the document, which will come to council when it's completed, and the council is work in progress. Once it's completed, it will come to council, everybody will see what, what has happened. But it, it's, it's my consideration, the man has done a good job, do it properly, do thoroughly.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna come around to Tracey.
Um, I'm just, um, I've got my problem with it, it's just that the last bit about the numbers of hours worked and taken will be dependent on the agreed work specification requirements, just wondering, once he's gathered all, everything he needs to do, what the anticipation is, how long has he been given to do the report, because I'm just mindful that...
We, we, we expect the reports sometime in June, if you're like...
Okay.
He has done an interim report.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, just, not disputing that.
I think what you're saying, if I, there must be a set amount of hours, which he, it must be an indicative amount of hours he said he's gonna do, and has he gone over it, and why has he gone over it?
Yeah, I think that's kind of, I know it's, it's a, it's a difficult one, because it's how much time he's had to do.
Yeah.
But the kind of, for me, there must be a, a bit of a, an estimate, or, or, you know...
Mike, I'm gonna come, Michael Elliot, for, for tonight, Michael, there has been, could, there, there are minutes of, uh, this body accepting the internal auditor's report two or three months back, interim report as it went through the year, so that one report has been made. His work, when he comes normally, is done together with the clerk. We're now in a situation where that's not going to be possible, therefore, fulfilling the remainder of his task for the year has got to be done through, with Michael and myself, and we embarked on that, we saw him yesterday, had a meeting in here yesterday with him for three hours, and the first time I've met him, the first time I think Michael has. And obviously, that had to be conducted on the basis of him filling in, telling us, informing us what he had done in outline with the clerk, and in pulling this together, this is exactly the sort of document which makes it a professional job for the council to have a checklist. Um, we'll do our best to cut, to keep his hours...
Yeah, I, I'm not disputing that, what I'm just saying is, is, is almost like, really, the expectation of, I don't, I'm not sure how much he's had to gather in to produce a report, but my expectation was, would be, if, if he had so much evidence to go through, it would take ten hours to do a report, or, do you know what I mean?
It'd be interesting that maybe what we could do outside of this, is that maybe do a comparison how much our auditors have cost us in previous years, and that would be a good, that'd be a way to...
A good comparison, yeah.
Okay, sorry, Mr Chairman, there is no comparison, I, I believe...
It was pretty poor before.
Between this one and the previous person, so... All right, okay, well, let's see, let's see when this comes through, all right, Martin?
Yeah, I, I must say, very quickly, um, I'm not discrediting this man, I think perhaps he's not getting the correct instruction, he's a professional man. We have sixteen hours of time with the clerk on the invoice, which didn't go through the correct procedures, it's eight hundred and sixty-one pounds thirty-six. At that point of the year, October two thousand and fifteen, the clerk only had delegated powers for five hundred pounds. So, that's my concern, that there doesn't seem to be any control of this, with spending and spending, we spent thousands with streets, we're spending thousands with this man, and we haven't got the basic end result, which is at this stage, we should have audited accounts.
Right.
And that's all I'll say, is that I'm unhappy the fact that, I'm, I, I shouldn't say I'm unhappy to reappoint him, I'm unhappy in the way that the council is instructing him.
Right, Mark, uh, Vince?
I propose we accept the, uh...
Okay, the recommendation is that the council, reappoint the council's internal audit date to two sixteen, two seventeen, that's been proposed by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Hayley, all those in favour? Uh, that's unanimous, then, thank you very much.
But can the chairman ensure that he's got clearly defined, please?
Uh, yes, we will, uh, well, with the, with the guidance of the finance working group, we will make sure that we are getting the best value from it, that's all I can say.
Because I don't, I don't...
But, no, I appreciate the, um...
And also, the concern is noted about the fact that the invoice didn't come to council.
Yeah, well, I can, I can, I acknowledge your comment, but it's not specifically directly related to that, because we're appointing an auditor, not telling him how we pay our invoices.
But then that's the concern.
He might pick it up if he's doing the job, right? Um, right, now, it's five past eight, I'm just gonna say, do, do we want to have a ten minute recess, or anybody wants to have a comfort break?
Ten minutes.
Five minute recess, anybody wants to have a comfort break? Do we need one?
What should we carry on?
Carry on.
Right, okay, I'm just, we, we said before that when we get to a certain point in the meeting, that if people wanted a recess, I'm just...
Going for broke. I don't know what that meant.
That's not a full house.
Sorry.
Right, eight, um, eighteen, no, where are we on?
Yeah, eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen.
No, right, hold on, sorry.
It's steaming through, aren't they?
George, you wanna break?
Do you wanna go to the toilet?
No.
No, I'm, uh...
Vince proposes it.
Just needs another...
No, I don't need, don't, sorry, I'll trust you. Um, right, item eighteen is appointment of working groups.
Hmm.
Now, there, there will be, there, there's potential to bring extra working groups in here, bear in mind that working groups are literally what they sound like, so let's not overcook this one. Um, now, what we have, the current, everyone's read the paper, and there'll be various decisions that are made, and I'll be stepping through each working group as we go through it. Um, so, we'll just knock these off. The Policies and Procedures Working Group consists of Stan, Michael and the clerk, is that correct?
As of now, yes, there was another member, he's no longer here.
Ah, right, do we need, all right, sorry.
Yes, 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 why is Lee in?
We've got three for you. Martin?
Can I remind you that we, is this the appropriate time to appoint the person who's supposed to be doing the bank reconciliation? Because that's a sort of working group thing, wasn't it?
Much, yeah, but it's coming next, isn't it? It's, yeah, some of the bank's English is, that'll be there, we'll put that in.
Yeah, I just didn't want to forget that, sorry.
Uh, remind me when we get to that point, just think about that.
But I...
Um, Policies and Procedures, councillor Stan Stubbs, Michael Elliot, the clerk, there should be a third person on the Policies and Procedures, Martin shouldn't be the third, should, well, should, should do. Martin's gonna say he wants to be there.
Yeah, I, I look at this as something that's gonna be a huge job for people to do, and I think if people realise that, then that's part of them to consider the workload, because, as we know, our procedures haven't been fully reviewed as according to what it should be.
Yes.
And some of our standing orders are inaccurate, I think is the nicest word to put it, and were changed, and shouldn't be.
Right, I'm sorry, are you, are you wanting to go on it, or are we gonna debate what I'm gonna do?
When I was just sort of pointing out that it's quite an important thing that we've got to start on this year, and I, I would be quite happy to work with people who want to work alongside me as a team on it, because I think we need to start from point one and work through it.
Right, are you putting your name forward to be...
Possibly, yes, could, uh, the, the, the committee sat through many weeks of work last year, going through standing orders, going through all the procedures, procedures.
Yeah.
So, it isn't true to say that no work's been done.
I think so.
But the, the, the document that came out of standing orders was, went through page by page in detail.
Yeah.
More than once, more than one round, that was the considered view of the committee recently.
That was, yeah, I think that's what that was all about.
Yeah.
It's came to council, it's finished document, it was in November or something like that.
Uh, yeah, and it's been, a lot of the standing, yes, it was, November two thousand and fifteen, amendments to standing orders, and there was, there's three pages of changes there.
It is the sort of document which is always gonna be possible, and different people have different views about.
Okay, uh, so, right, I'll let me come around, I'm gonna go left to right, because it's, uh...
Uh, right, thank you, if you want an extra person on the Policies and Procedure Working Group, can I suggest that Peter Rind, I haven't asked him, but he has a great deal of knowledge from another town council on things like this, and I think he would be an asset on the Policies and Procedure. I don't know whether he'll take it on, I haven't asked him.
Thank you very much. Right, so, at the moment, there's potential for Peter, eh, if I'm honest, I hear what they said that possibly the chairman could go, but I'm trying to lighten my load. So, I like the idea of Peter, Vince, do you wanna go on it as well?
No, I don't, I'm right, I was gonna, uh, I was gonna ask the current people that are on there if they're happy to stop on there.
Stan, are you happy to stay on?
Can we even see what happens?
Yes, Michael Elliot is happy to stay on.
And I'd be more than happy to, uh, to second Peter.
Uh, right, okay, uh, also, Martin said that he would be interesting going on it, are you still interesting going on?
I am, but I just wanted to point out, I wasn't criticizing what you've done, um, what I was, wanted to point out is that you can take one heading from an NALC legal topic, and you can put it against our standing order, and that was the disorderly conduct one, which, which has been altered to suit our past chairman, and that is what I'm trying to point out, there are things which were agreed, which are not lawful.
Nothing, nothing was agreed to suit any one person.
Well, let's not get into, uh, a tit for tat on the...
Well, no, but chairman, I have to say, I'm, yeah, if Martin's going on, I must definitely enclose...
Ah, wow.
Well, let's not, let's not, let's not, um, let's not...
I haven't been voted or nominated yet, but, um, but I think that's...
Of course, I'm not gonna have to speak, then.
Can I just say, chairman, why, in view of what you've been saying about that?
Well, it's the truth, if I had it with me, I would show you it.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
It's a NALC, it's a NALC legal heading.
We've got to a really good point in the meeting, and now it's gone off the agenda and gone about personalities.
Yes.
I will eject both members of the councillors if they continue along that track.
Well, it's a great, it isn't just about personalities, it is about the form and substance of what was said.
Yes.
And they have, those are inaccurate statements.
Yes, and, and that, I will be disappointed.
So, you can, I...
Right, everybody stop me while I listen to Vince.
Can I just, um, remind everybody that there is a proposal on the table that has been seconded?
Yes, right, well, that's true, let's deal with that, thank you, Vince, bringing it back down to the planet Earth with a bump. Peter Rind has been proposed, and he's been seconded, proposed by Joyce, seconded by Vince, all those in favour that Peter would go on, is unanimous. The group, does the group need another person? We've done that, yeah, that nomination, so are you nominating yourself still, Mar- Martin?
Yes, I would like to.
Would anybody like to second Martin to go on to the group? Right, Martin, sorry, that one is gonna fall.
No, that, that's fine.
Okay, so the group stands, uh, and I'm just gonna confirm that we've got Stan Stubbs, Michael Elliot, Pete, Peter Rind, um, and...
And the clerk.
And the clerk.
Um, chairman, can I just say to prove, and because I'm being accused of wrongdoing, can I send the working group, the NALC legal heading? And our standing order, so they can see the total difference in...
Uh, that's perfectly acceptable, thank you for that.
Because it, it says that they can forcibly remove people, and NALC says that's unlawful.
I'm gonna, uh, I'm just gonna belt and braces and say that, um, proposal is then, that the Policies and Procedures Group consists of Stan Stubbs, Michael Elliot, Peter Rind and the clerk, proposed from the chair, that's how it stands, seconded by Vince, all those in favour then, to belt braces it? Seconded by Vince, all those in favour then to belt braces it? That is unanimous as well. Right, okay, so that is, you're gonna give it, thank you. Finance Working Group consists of two members and the clerk. It has previously consisted of three. Anybody having an observation? Do you need three people on it?
I'm, I'm happy for the two people if they want to remain, but I'm reading things about policies and procedures. The clerk should not be involved in, in this working group.
It's a financial, finance, financial responsible, responsible financial officer.
It's the same with our, it's, no, but it's the same with our budget. We set it, and the clerk obviously has, and is supposed to just produce it.
I know your comments. Vince?
Uh, in view of the outstanding work, I would like this terminated, please.
Minister?
In view of the outstanding work that Michael Elliott, uh, Elliott and Michael Hayley have done, I would like to propose, if they are happy to accept, that they remain on the Finance Working Group.
Okay, I'll second that. Right, so we have a proposal, Michael Elliott, Michael Hayley and the clerk, form the group, seconded by Stan, stay on there. All those in favour? That's unanimous.
Do you need... Chairman, anything is, can we, um, at some stage actually have some, because it was mentioned, it was mentioned about having the working groups with a purpose. Not that they're not doing the purpose, but if we could at some stage review what their role is, because I think it was mentioned tonight, the extreme lot of hours that they're putting in, and, and things, and I think it needs to be...
All right. Well, the thing is, maybe, maybe we can all count, all groups after their form will look at their...
Yeah, it's not negative.
Well, in that fact, all working groups are meant to be feeding back with strategic documents, aren't they?
Yeah.
So those strategic documents would be the format for feeding back what their remit is, what their objectives are, how they're progressing, blah, blah.
We're supposed to accept them.
Um, right, uh, Promotions, Publicity Working Group, which has currently got Vince, Adam and Joyce on it. I've already stated that I was gonna come off it.
I'm coming off it.
Oh, okay, so Joyce can come on it, Vince, you're on your own.
No.
And I believe there's a suggestion by Michael Hayley coming onto the tagline.
Yeah, one part suggesting is that the Promotions Working Group is split into a, by Events Working Group, and that the Promotion, Marketing, Publicity is a separate working group, which we effectively we've got at the moment with Jasmine and Sally Anne. And, and the Events is built as a separate group.
Anybody got a comment or observation on that? Martin?
Yeah, I don't mind the split, but I'm on the thing that I like the idea of the comment, and that is the rules of working group, that the working groups are set a task and then they finish. I'm just wondering whether we actually need a Promotions, Avocan Working Group, because obviously it's, some of the membership has now said they don't want to. But if, you know, the idea was that new things were to be brought, it hasn't really, I don't care what I say, it hasn't happened. We have the same band concerts as when the clerk used to pick up the phone.
Well, it's a new people.
I'm, 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 but I don't think it's supposed to be a think tank of what we do. I think if somebody comes to council and says we want a beacon lighting event, then that's the opportunity to set up the, the working group for that.
Okay.
I don't think we're able, though, with that level of engagement of community, to, for them to come towards, to be fair.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about members here actually having a purpose in the working group. At the moment, the working group doesn't have a, a purpose.
Right, okay, well, that's, that'll be something for them to decide on. Michael?
There are some purposes on this document.
Yes, I know.
It wouldn't be done here to pay attention to it.
Well, I probably might read it, actually, but maybe that's...
Well, I know, there's a discussion going through, the rather losing track of...
Well, we've got a lot of...
Quite good starts for each of the working groups.
Let me just have Vince as two.
Can I make two proposals if possible, please? Good enough proposal of Jasmine, as she's currently on the, um, Facebook site and the Twitter account, that she be coerced onto the Promotions Group.
I'm sorry.
Encouraged, sorry. And also, I would like to encourage Tracey onto the Promotions Working Group. Where's that?
Right, is it staying? Right, the thing is, Michael said, are we keeping Promotions?
In their hands, so they go round. So please come, we get it right. We have no postcards to give any, anybody. We have nothing to give to people.
Right, okay.
It's just, we're not, we're not, I'm finished. We have not got a stall at the Rockham Show, at the Bird Fair.
It's irrelevant.
And the reason why, it's not because of money, it's because we can't get the volunteers to run these things.
Well, it was awful, right?
How can I say?
Right, okay, we had a promo, we had a proposal, I just wanna revisit this, because we didn't, no, why, please hand out of it, please. Right, Vince proposed that we retain the Promotions Working Group. It was seconded by Stan. Can I just see that, show our hands again, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the Promotions Working Group stays as it is. How many are against? One, two, two voted against.
There's another one in there.
Three. So the Promotions Working Group stays as it is, basically, because we're voting. Anybody abstaining on that? Peter Reind's abstaining. That would be right.
It'd be nice to know why.
Right, so the Promotions Working Group standard is now, and let me just clarify, the publicity officer, which is currently me, I'm not, I'm not gonna be doing that anyway. There's nothing to say that somebody on the Promotions Working Group can't be a publicity officer. There's also gonna be an opportunity in about five minutes, if we get there, to develop a working group to review our structure, who could actually come back and go, actually, Promotions Working Group doesn't work, we should go for events and things. So let's see, are you with me? So let's go with what we know, and if we get an evolution in the next two months or three months where it goes, let's split it out, we can revisit it. The most important thing is we get the structure in place. The second most important thing is that people on these groups are keen and willing. Keen and willing volunteers better than tender act and all that sort of stuff.
Absolutely.
So the next bit of this is, we've got a Promotions Working Group, we're gonna have to find some humans to go on it. Michael?
Where does the publicity officer sit within this proposal and these...
Right, well, this, well, at the moment, if we, if we stick, if, if we have a publicity officer slot, it could be that somebody on that group, and I'm hoping it could be Jasmine, would be publicity officer, which she would still also be on the Promotions Working Group. Because that way, she's right in the nest where all the decisions and all the actions are happening, and she can report back, rather than have to sort of go to people. Why have you not decided?
That proposal's what I was trying to allude to, to be fair, but...
Does that need a proposal?
It will do when we get to it, Jasmine.
I agree with what you're saying. Publicity does need to be part of, but I think it needs to be a step away as well, so that if it's all going to be in one group, and it, say it was us three, I do think there should be people in charge of doing the events, the publicity in with the meetings and the groups, the decision-making, but their work is on the publicity side.
But wouldn't within the working group decide who would lead on?
There could be dynamics, it could be set up.
So the dynamics would change as, as events come up. There's might be an event that's right up the Prince Street, and he takes the lead on it, and there might be an event that's right up my street.
And all the time, the person that's...
Dynamics change.
You're feeding, you're feeding your feed.
And within the dynamics, the person that goes, well, I'm good on publicity, I'll do that. You can do any red tents and set fire to things, I'm gonna do all publicity.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's how the working group evolve. It's got all the right people in the right place, but they all have job roles within that group.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, I'm gonna come to Michael, because this is dragging on longer than it should be doing. So, Michael Hayley?
Yeah, I was gonna say that we're talking about publicity, it's not just about events. The, the, the whole profile of this council needs raising. We do a lot of good work, which tends to get lost in all the negativity that goes on. And I think it's, it's very important to just, with their own website, which needs re-looking. Compared to ours, well, up in the press, it's very, ours is very staid, unfortunately. Not very dynamic. But we do a lot of good work. We are very, very bad at letting the people out there know what we are doing. And I think that's a shame and opportunity we miss. So I would, I can say, well, come on, we tend to focus on the events, but publicity is more than just the events we're doing. That's just one aspect of it.
We could stress that about the...
Exactly.
We could stress that about the remit of this group as it goes forward.
But I know, because Vince proposed Jasmine and Michael to go on it, but what I, I know we haven't got there yet, but can I just say, if it is going to be a new dynamic, not to dispound it three months down the line, you've got to have something established before...
Yeah.
Because a lot of these already events are already in the diary. We'll be looking towards Christmas and beyond, won't we? So I kind of think it's, doesn't make sense to create something to dispound it three months.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying we are doing it.
No, no, I'm just saying that that's...
I'm gonna have to, Martin, we need to look at, see if we can populate this group, otherwise it won't get a lot of...
That's what I was gonna ask. Put my name, I would like to put my name forward to be on that.
This, this, this newly formed, but with the same name of the Promotions Publicity Working Group, uh, the people that are on it, currently Vince is definitely on it. Vince, happy to stay on?
Hmm.
Right, I'm gonna carry through this. Um, proposal for Vince is, who's proposing it? Tracey, seconded by Michael Elliott. All those in favour? Right, so Vince has got the unanimous, he's definitely on. Uh, who else has wanted to go on it? Trugger?
I don't know if I want to go on it, I, I'm, I'm happy to stay on the publicity.
Right, okay, well, maybe you could become the publicity officer. Right, and we'll, we'll come back. Tracey, happy to go on it? Tracey's been nominated by Vince, seconded by Martin. Uh, all those in favour? That's unanimous, because she voted for herself. So Tracey is definitely on the group. Um, Martin, you propose yourself?
Yeah.
Seconded by Sally Anne. All those in favour of Martin going on the group? Yeah? We've got, oh, we've got one, two, three, four, five. Five in favour. All those against? One, two, three. Three against, and all those, beg your pardon, four against.
Well, I retract, because I'm not working on a group where someone doesn't want me. And I don't, don't take that in the wrong way. Don't, don't, don't take it the wrong way. I just, yeah, I'm not gonna work, because that's what we had with certain other people on the group before, and that's why I walked in. Sorry? No, no, I wasn't pointing fingers. I wasn't pointing fingers in any direction.
Anybody else want to go on that group?
I would.
Sally Anne?
I would just go, Sally Anne.
Sally Anne, proposed by Joyce in that case, seconded by Vince.
But don't ask me for any photographs of the events.
Sally Anne, proposed by...
For your publicity.
Joyce.
Sorry, I'm voting for Sally Anne.
All those in favour of Sally Anne? That's unanimous.
And don't ask me to hand out leaflets.
Absolutely.
To Promotions.
I talked to him, right?
I'm not going to, because it's silly.
Oh, I can't hear, there's conversations going on that corner.
Right, okay, at the moment then, we, we, because we voted on each one individually, and it's, it's a definite go-up. We've got Vince, Tracey, Sally Anne.
Jasmine, yeah?
No, Jasmine's not gonna...
She's not going on it?
I don't much blame her really.
I think I ought to be on.
We'll, we'll do that next, we'll do it, we'll do it in a moment.
I could stay apart.
Yes.
People can be...
So do you want to propose it again?
Member, but I can't guarantee...
People can be co-opted later.
I can propose it again.
Just be a stay apart.
Right, Vince?
Now I propose that Jasmine is on the sideline, not as a spare part, it doesn't sound right. Jasmine is on the sideline for the Promotions Group, so that she can report for her Twitter and blog feed.
Yes, and I second that.
Yeah.
She's happy.
And that's what I was trying to allude to at the beginning.
Okay, so, so she's on it, but she has a specific remit?
Yes, a specific role.
And we will, we will, as part of the working group, define that specific role and put that forward to the next council meeting as soon as practical.
Okay, cool, so Vince is...
Need to, 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 to...
Yeah, yeah.
Need that.
Yes, and that, that was what I was trying to appeal to.
Can, can, can we, uh, come, right, so the proposal from Vince is that Jasmine goes on to the, uh, onto the working group.
With a specific role.
With a specific direction towards publicity.
What you've just said.
Right. Proposed by Vince, seconded by Stan. All those in favour?
Okay, fine.
Unanimous. So, that's cool. And well, obviously, when you meet for the first time, if you want me there to help share the input, I've got...
Yes, please, yes.
No, I'm not, no.
What for ever?
Um, right, OCC Working Group is going to have Michael Hayley, Jasmine Hopkins and Vince Howard on it. Do you three people want to stay on it?
The hope, whatever you want to call it. Princess Avenue thing.
Right, right, so there's no changes to that. Um, proposal then that this working group stays the same with the same three people. Proposed by Stan, seconded by Joyce, all those in favour?
Yes.
Are you abstaining or against?
I'm against, because it's two years of achieving nothing, and it's called a community centre, and what is it?
So much for it all in the group.
Um, you got that right, yeah. Uh, the Sentry Working Group consists of councillors, Michael Elliott, Joyce Lucas, Stan Stove, Peter Reind and the clerk.
That's fair.
That's full, obviously. Any changes to that? Anybody want to come off it, or is it staying, Peter?
We would like to keep it as it is. We're now making a bit of progress.
Okay.
There is a report which will be done tonight, but...
And it's a little fast, can finish.
Uh, right, so the group is further changed. Proposed by Vince Howard that the group is, stays as it is with the same people. They're all in agreement to stay. Proposed by Vince, seconded by Tracey. They're all in agreement to stay, proposal by Vince, seconded by Tracy, all those in favour? That's unanimous, that one is. Uh, what, what are we doing about the press officer then, we're not, the press officer?
Well, it's up to you whether.
You know what the remit that you're doing with this thing?
Which that's something else.
Chair, Mr Chair.
There needs to be two people to balance.
Can we discuss that at the Promotions Group so that the remit's done and then we can bring it to council?
Okay, we won't, we won't, what it is, at the moment, the press officer is, uh, is gonna stand down, the press officer role is gonna be vacant until. Pub- publicity officer, yeah, pub- publicity officer will be, will be vacant until we get a feedback from that working group.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be called office then either.
Right, okay, with the, because there's an opportunity to form any new groups, there's two things, there's the neighbourhood plan. Steering group, which is, did I miss? Yeah, it was missed, and also a, another group as well, but we'll go for that, neighbourhood plan steering group, who's on that? So the neighbourhood plan steering group consists of Michael Haley. And, uh, councillor's not with us anymore, so does anybody want to go on to the neighbourhood plan?
Jasmine still wants to go on it.
Yeah, all right, okay, so Jasmine.
I propose Jasmine.
Proposed by, uh, Michael, seconded by you, Martin?
That's fine, if we're doing it.
Well, just for you saying that, I'll just take it as you were, I was trying to really let something to a point I spoke. Okay, so proposed by Michael Haley, seconded by Martin Brooks, all those in favour?
Stan must have something nice waiting at home on the other.
And also, we talked about forming a working group to look at the council structure, this was something that's spoken about a while ago and quite rightly, Peter's reminded us that it was coming back to the main meeting, so.
Yes.
First things is, I need a proposal that we do form a working group to review how the council structure, proposed by Michael Haley, seconded by Sally Ann, all those in favour?
Oh, yeah.
Unanimous, so that working group is no, new form, now form. Working group for the, to review the structure of the council. The, uh, second, uh, the next part of this is, how many people should be made up of? Two, three, four, one?
Ten.
Ten, no. How many do you think? Four, let's look at four, say we've raised four bodies for this one then, so. Uh, who wants to go on it? Michael.
So who's on it?
Nobody at the minute, because you've just formed it. Michael Haley wants to go on it, Jasmine wants to go on it? No? Uh, Martin? And Michael Elliott? Michael Elliott? My favourite man. He plays tennis here, doesn't he?
I would like to see it finish because we went through those awful informal meetings.
Right, so at the moment we've got Michael Haley, Jasmine Hopkins, Martin Brooks and Michael Elliott, anybody else want to go on that? This is gonna be a real interesting group. No, no, because it's like, changing how things work, I've been doing this for last year.
It's a recommendation, isn't it?
Right, so, shall we take these one at a time then, so proposal for Mike?
I'd, I'd propose Adam.
Oh, I'd second that.
I'll do that when I do it.
Don't you be a little long.
Well, that's five now. Okay, well, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be open to five, we'll, we'll go through this one at a time, right, proposal for Michael Haley is Vince, seconded by Tracy.
I'm more than happy to propose all five people.
Well, I'm gonna go through them one at a time, we're this is the format we follow next work, I know it seems long-winded, proposed by Vince, seconded by Tracy, all those in favour of Michael Haley? That's, that's, everybody agrees. Jasmine, proposed by Vince, seconded by Sally Ann. Uh, all those in favour? That's, everyone agrees, yes. Uh, councillor Martin, uh, proposed by, you proposed yourself, didn't you?
I think everybody proposed theirselves originally.
Yeah, proposed by Martin, seconded by, um, Adam. All those in favour? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, did you end up there, seven? That's seven, four, how many against? One, and how many abstention, oh, so two against, beg your pardon.
And I withdraw as two of the people who want to be on it don't wanna work with me again, I'm not fighting these people anymore.
All right, so Martin's.
It's just no point, what's the point of going on a group?
Michael Elliott, proposed by.
I think it's the adult way to deal with it.
I can't hear.
Michael Elliott, proposed by Vince, seconded by Sally Ann, all those in favour? Are you against or abstaining?
I'm just abstaining.
Right, so everyone but Martin was abstained.
I think it should be forward anyway.
Okay, and Adam Lowey was proposed by Michael Elliott, it's Michael Haley. Seconded by Vince.
It's a pointless group anyway.
First name, right, all those in favour of Lowey? Are you abstaining, Mike?
Yeah, because I just lost interest in the group. It's nothing personal.
We meet once a year, at my house.
Right.
Um. Is that the end of that?
It's no good, it's no good doing working groups if people don't want you there. I had that rejoice thing with a fact to me and meetings.
Okay. Can everyone try not to converse, please, across the, right, uh, item nineteen is the bank signatories. Uh, the council has three accounts of which signatories required, everybody's read the paper, and we have a current account, a Mayor's Charity Account and then Cambridge Building Society Notice Account. Now, I've been a signatory for quite a while now and for the word go, I am going to come off as signatory for all the accounts. Certainly because I'm chairman, I can't sign the Mayor's Charity Account anyway. And also we need to get some new names and people helping to take the responsibility, so at the moment we've got councillor Stubbs and councillor Howard on the current, well, in fact you can read it, Martin?
Can I just point out for anybody who's interested in the Cambridge Building Society, there's one pitfall on that is that they won't accept you if you can't provide a passport or current driving licence, that's the reason I didn't end up being a signature.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so on the current account, we'll do this each councillor, so are you happy to stay as a signatory? Vince, are you happy to stay as a signatory?
Yes.
Do, we need a third signatory at least.
What about Peter?
Peter?
Have you got a current driving licence?
No, no, it's not.
We all hope so because it's driven me.
It's not, it's not applicable for you.
Peter who's, uh, being proposed by Vince, seconded by Stan, all those in favour of Vince, uh, of Peter? Just to go back then, so, and we, well, because these are signatories, then we'll keep Vince and Stan, so just need a proposer for Stan, which is Michael Haley, seconded by Jasmine, all those in favour? That's unanimous, and a proposer for Vince, which is, uh, Michael Haley, seconded by Jasmine, all those in favour? That's unanimous as well, so the current account is sorted. Do, is it, should we have a fourth one or are we happy with three? We'll leave it at three. Leave it at three. Mayor's Charity Account is currently councillor Stan Stubbs, happy to stay on Stan?
Yes.
Proposed for Stan by Vince, seconded by Jasmine, all those in favour? Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you, Mike. Uh, we need another person, so.
Peter?
Sorry, Jasmine, we need a.
I don't need to, no problem.
It's a three, so Jasmine and Peter.
Okay, friends.
It's only, um, you only, you might only get one check a year.
One a year, it's only one a year.
Right.
That much should work, though, doesn't it, so, so, Peter or Jasmine? You can, you can read it, you can read it, both, right, Joyce proposed Peter, seconded by, um, Stan, all those in favour? That's unanimous, and we've covered Stan, haven't we, I think we had a permanent for Stan, didn't we?
Vince and Jasmine.
Yeah, right, that's right, okay, and then the last one is the Cambridge Building Society Notice Account. It's currently Michael Elliott and it's currently Michael Haley, is that correct? Yeah.
No.
Both happy to stay on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Probably best not to change it.
I'm looking for a proposal for Michael Elliott, Vince, seconded by Jasmine, all those in favour? Unanimous, proposal for Michael Haley, Jasmine, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? Unanimous, and then we need a third man in the frame?
Peter?
Or Jasmine?
Oh, I'm.
Oh, you don't have driver licence, you're a cuss, what?
I'm not from, I'm not from.
Uh, right, Stan's been proposed by Vince, seconded by Jasmine, all those in favour of Stan? Unanimous.
It's simple for me, now I know I can sign everything.
That's a good point. Is there any others?
It's a nice meaty application form, I fill this out and then they send it back.
Okay, uh, schedule the payments, decide whether to approve the scheduled payment, anybody not in concert with observations to give the approval? No? Proposal to accept by Vince, seconded by Jasmine, all those in favour? Are you abstaining, Martin?
Yes, please.
So everybody except Martin who's abstained, you want that, minute in, Martin?
Yes, please.
Minute, that's pleased. Statement of accounts. Statement of accounts. Uh, statement on accounts, uh, approve the statement of account, anybody with comments or observations? Martin?
This is, this J, isn't it?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm a bit concerned that members have signed some alteration, I fully understand what the alteration is, but this should be the work of the proper officer. And then I understand that the bank reconciliation for this month was done by the proper officer because nobody had been reappointed after the resignation of Mr Mills, so unfortunately I would not be able to accept these accounts on those basis.
Okay, well, we don't have your observations, anybody get any other comments? Okay, uh, proposal to accept the statement of accounts.
My proposal was to reject.
Oh, begging, sorry, oh, well, beg your pardon, Martin proposed to reject the statement of account, anybody want to second that?
Because purely because it hasn't been done properly.
I understand, uh, that has not been seconded, so that motion falls. Proposal to accept the statement of accounts with the amendment because it, and it's been signatures by two members of the council, we've made sure this is correct, so. Proposed by Vince, seconded by Jasmine, all those in favour? Um, we've got, Peter, answer, one, two, three, Joyce?
Yes, sorry.
Peter? Right, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, one abstention, abstention or against, against, obviously?
Um, a minute please, I voted against it because, um, no. Because it's not been done properly.
Yes, please, Michael, sorry, this note has been, um, annotated, yeah, the note itself is an annotation of the document and it's been initialed by Michael himself. It isn't an office of the document, it is, and no, it's signatures are to the note. The document was put forward by the clerk. Yeah, Alice, he also put all the other documents forward.
Yeah?
But the alterations are by members because the handwriting is the same.
The clerk knows that the, the people who've done the note have got a key conjunction with the clerk, it's the clerk's document. The clerk knows the substance and the meaning of the adjustment, it is the clerk's document, it is not documentless.
I, I think in future I'd prefer that, because it's, you know, we print a lot of things, that we get something that looks a bit more professional, that's all I'm saying, and not altered like this.
But it's, it's an evidence, this, this creates what's called a Nordic trail, so this would be perfectly acceptable, I believe.
Uh, if you were to falsify a document by creating another document, that would be an illegal move, that is completely legal. It's been signed by two people, so that's why I have a problem.
But they don't have the authority to sign the accounts.
Well, right, it's been voted on, so we'll, we'll move through it, we'll see what comes out in the, um, in the wash, is that so? Uh, so, pen of our to work in town council, this is to consider a report from councillor Brooks, everybody read the report? This is the little moment paper now. Um, anybody got any comments or questions?
Can I, can I say, I, I feel that this is something I should have mentioned.
Sorry, Chairman, can I interrupt because I'm entitled to speak first, understanding order, I can't remember.
No, I'm sorry, but I want, I, I want to say.
No, the rules are, Chairman, that I speak first.
Let's, well, Stan, Stan started, I mean, I did look to you, Martin, you didn't say anything, and then Stan started.
Well, it was rushed.
Well, let Stan finish then.
I, I feel that I should not take part in this because I'm a member, what?
Ah, right, okay.
I'm sorry then for.
Declaration by Stan.
And I am apologising.
Anybody else want to declare? No, make sure you put your names in the book.
Yeah.
Uh, right, okay, Martin, you want to talk about the paper?
Yes, um, it's just very simple, I've written down what I perceive as the facts, I've obtained the invoice which, um, says care of Oakham Town Council, which is not their registered office. Um, this does not have a work order, it did not come to council, I don't know who authorised it, I can see we signed the checks, but under the audit laws, if the audit is made without authority of full council, then we are obliged to seek that money back, or either from, I've put Oakham Town Partnership, but it's easier, but as nobody will tell me who authorised it, we can't chase the person who actually authorised it, so my view is the recommendation is there, that basically we ask the Oakham Town Partnership to pay it back, because I believe strongly, when people were quibbling the years before about paying the bus thing, which was about hundred fifty pounds, I don't believe this council would have approved this sum of money.
Right, anybody getting, Michael, I've got my work around the table, I've got Michael first and I'll come round to Peter and to.
But isn't Michael under partnership?
Martin?
I'm addressing the paper, nothing else. Um, financial regulation four point one provides the clerk, provides the clerk executive powers which span which are now up to five, up five thousand pounds or less, previously two thousand pounds or less, this is one thousand pounds. Um, so that does comply with current and previous financial regulations.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna come around the table, I'm gonna come all the way round then, um, Peter?
Well, just a simple question, it says it was paid to the town partnership in error. Can we have some clarification of what it was for and was it in error?
Yes, it was paid in error, because that's right, the, the council approved in, when we do the, uh, budget, there's actually a budget heading that says Oakham Town Partnership, thousand pounds. And that's where the council agreed that they were paying this money over and the agreement, and I don't think it's very well documented to be fair, is that the Oakham Town Partnership put on the late night shopping and this money is donated by the Oakham Town Council to help them put on the late night shopping, so that's what the money was used for. And it's been being paid for a number of years, so it could be said that, and I'm not saying this is right or wrong, it hasn't, it could be said that it's just happened and happened and happened and it hasn't been done enough thorough processing, it could have been overlooked because now we have asked for works orders, this one may have been overlooked. Uh, I'm gonna come to Michael Elliott now.
The only, the other relevant test is that it is within a previously agreed budget.
Yes.
And it was at the time within the budget.
Now, yes.
So the, the power of paying it was covered by councillor Haley and it was also within the second test, which is that it was in the agreed budget.
Yeah, did that answer your question by the way, Peter?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Martin?
Well, I, I've had this dispute before, when something is put in the budget, it doesn't mean that the council has followed procedures and approved it, it is just setting some money aside, and this always used to come to council. Um, I don't get this business where there is so many loopholes which seems to permit this, where we're told financial regulation allows this, financial regulation allows that. As far as I was concerned, in two thousand and fifteen, the clerk was allowed delegated powers of five hundred pounds. This is why I said that the, the, the finance working group or policies needs to look at all our regulations on these things to tighten this up because otherwise we don't need to be here, we're now told that the clerk can go out and spend five thousand pounds. We very rarely spend five thousand pounds and that is what I'm getting concerned about now, is that a member can come or an organisation and now we're told that we can, you know, it doesn't matter, they can decide behind a closed door, we spend five thousand pounds, this is where I'm, I'm slightly, my proposal is, is what is actually there is that I believe, I believe that this is unlawful because it's not approved by this council.
Uh, well, no, that's not right, the, the, it says here, the recommendations, because it, it's not, it's not unlawful because these two guys have just pointed out that it's not, that the.
Well, I dispute that because we were on different, we were on different financial, we were on different, we were on different financial regulations in two thousand and fifteen and that's another problem, is that policies and procedures disappeared from our website the other week.
Martin, tell me.
And we have a document that's on there that says January two thousand and sixteen, and I cannot find a minute anywhere in the, in the minutes that says that those procedures that are now dated two thousand and sixteen, January, came to council for approval.
They did, they did.
But that's like he asking, where is it?
Right, it's on the minutes of the council.
But I can't find them.
Right, it's not, it's not strictly relevant, I was wanting to know.
But my recommendation is written there, if it falls, it's fine, but the thing is, as you've said quite clearly, it hasn't followed what been a proper sort of way you said in, uh. I mean, you also complained that it came out of your Promotions of Open Budget, but then, but then I believe that's your signature on the cheque, so I thought it was a bit odd.
Shall we get the facts, right, we alluded to a five hundred pound limit, I think at the time it was a thousand pounds. Yes.
No, no, it was a thousand this year.
No, it's five, five, five thousand this year.
Well, it's, it's, it's just getting out of control, we might as well.
Getting out of control.
It is, when you, when you, when you get to the situation where, where, where when we had training and you were there, it said there is no such thing as an emergency and every payment should come to council.
This isn't a general, just discussion, we're talking about a narrow sequence of events, whether the, whether the proposal for twenty four, whether the factability vote are accurate or not, okay, not accurate.
Well, I was told it was five hundred pounds.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I want to say stop now.
But anyway, whatever.
Stop, because what it is, we're now talking about something which is, it might be relevant to the point where we're not looking at what is or isn't the rules, we're looking at your general item. I'm now going to ask for Jasmine to say what she wanted to say.
Well, I, I just really wouldn't like the last word to fall with what the two Michaels have pointed out, uh, how this did fall in financial regulations and did fall into the budget, the agreed budget.
Yes.
Which is what I think is.
The, yes, and that's documented, so the, so the proposal that Martin is making, and then I'll read it out now because I know Martin won't do this. Due to this failure and to comply with laws and regulations, I make the following proposal. Oakham Town Council requires Oakham Town Partnership Limited to return one thousand pounds paid to their neighbour. Martin, are you happy that's your proposal?
I'm using error as a, because I don't think procedures were followed correctly.
That's Martin's proposal, seconded by. No, we, right, thank you, that does fail, I'm wrong, four, wrong, that's it, right. Twenty three is full audit of accounts, this is, uh, Martin and Sally Ann. Uh, is anybody going to the document, anybody got any questions, I'm gonna give Sally Ann and or Martin an opportunity to speak first.
We both go to speak, but Sally Ann would like to speak first.
Martin, Sally Ann?
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the Michaels because they have done a brilliant job with everything they've done on the financial side. I understand now the audits are being done, so we, you know, part of this question that we're asking for doesn't follow now. But what I would like to see is, once these audits have been completed and signed off, that this line is drawn under last year's finances. Let's move forward, make sure that any advice notes are followed and fully completed and questions asked. By the Financial Working Group, if not, if, you know, they don't follow the things that the audit report pulls out, we need to know why they're not being followed properly.
Okay. Uh, Martin, did you, Sally Ann, you finished yet?
Yeah, I've finished.
I've basically asked for this because I don't know when the internal audit is coming in and he's only gonna detest when he does it. And the only reason I've asked for this is because I've seen that there are less than five hundred transactions, but I would like it to be going through as a full audit because even this week myself, just browsing through invoices, I found a small payment that's been paid twice.
Well, we need to check it first.
I know, but I'm just saying that if that's, if that sort of thing has been going on, you know, the, the, and, and none of the, none of the procedures that we paid Street to recommend this for, I say none because we can start with the basic, is that every invoice must have a work order attached to it, now, if you ask to see the invoices that we have, it's in a ring box folder. The work orders are about a quarter of size and number of that, so if we can't even follow the basic procedure, i- i- it causes me concerns and I've been asked by members to, oh, just move on, draw a line and that, but until we recognise these things, we can't move forward, as a councillor, I can't ignore the fact that procedures are not being followed one hundred percent. We were told by Street last year, you know, implementing software and all that, the staff haven't even been trained, it's just sitting there. So I have no confidence and it's not against the working group trying to. So I have no confidence, and it's not against the working group trying to get it done, but the evidence is there that, that, that we are not in a situation that's any different from what we were last year. And I, I, and the only reason I'm asking for a proper audit of all our all our accounts, which is not large, and all the procedures, is so that we can act on them. We can use the internal auditor, we don't have to go out, yeah, sorry, we don't have to go to.
If you carry on, if you fall, all that.
Sorry, I'm just saying, we, 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 we need to get to a point where we actually take notice reports. We have an external audit report which has not been presented to this council for comment, actions or whatever, and there are recommendations in there that hadn't even been considered.
Chairman, can the question report, please?
Well, yeah, I'm just gonna see what councillor A has to say, then we'll go to the, um, proposal.
I think it's, I think it's terribly difficult if, the word fishing trip, I think is relevant here. You can spend hours going through particular documents on a fishing trip, and that isn't really a good way of testing whether the accounting records and the accounts are being done properly, that's the first thing to say. The second I'd like to say is that councillor Brooks raised with me in March, I think it was, a six-point list of instances where he felt the right procedures hadn't been followed through, and got the reply, send me a list of them, to me. There are the six items, and the finance working group will sit down with the clerk and go through each one. And when we've done that, we will then sit down with you, Martin, and go through.
But that's not your job to do that, and that's why we just need.
That is what I agree with you, and that.
We had, I think told off for giving me that list.
Excuse me, excuse me, that we were ready to embark on that when the clerk abruptly went off script. It was then decided that it was, it was decided by the finance working group in discussion with the leader of the council at that point, the six items list. When we are able to pursue that, we will. In the meantime, councillor Brooks, you, you've raised all these things in, in somewhat of, in some instances exaggerated form and dramatic form, and you've put it all out as if one thing or another had happened, which is absolutely untested, and is, and there is no evidence for.
The evidence is here, council.
You, you think you've got the evidence, we said, we said, look, we said, we're talking, we're talking to the council, it's the council.
I don't want to run out of time, and I don't want to argue with you, but.
I've asked for the question, report please.
Yeah, chairman, can I just, just show one, yeah, and then I'll put my proposal. Can I put one piece of evidence? And if any member says this is acceptable, then there should be questions asked. That is in our invoice file to show a payment. It has no amount.
My, my site's not that good.
No, I pass it round, it has no amount, but you should be interested, councillor, because you're gonna make a decision. I have twenty odd examples.
Nobody's gonna make a decision in about three minutes, because when this gets to nine o'clock, this meeting stops.
It doesn't even say where the money's gone to, how much or anything.
What happened to the procedure that had been placed?
Right, I'm gonna call a stop now, I'm gonna call a stop.
Can I put my proposal then, please, which is on there?
Well, you can propose to if I allow it, and if people don't listen to the chairman when we're getting to three minutes for the hour, then that means that it won't go ahead. So this is why I ask for people to be mindful of, the chairman here, I don't dictate what you do, I keep everybody in order. Now, we're at great risk, if I choose to talk for the next five minutes.
Then we can ask for an extension.
Well, I won't pass it, I won't authorize it, I don't think anybody else would. What I'm saying here is that everybody needs to be mindful that we stick to the agenda item. I hear what you're saying about these documents, and I hear all the passion coming out in people's voices. Got a minute and a half ago yet, have I, guys? You see how easy it is to ruin a council meeting by dragging it on?
Can I have twenty seconds of your time, please? I would just like to point out, I willingly signed this, because this was taken forward as an agenda item for money to be paid out for the Anglian Society, therefore, this is minuted, where that money, how much has gone to.
Yes, I know it's minuted, but that is the accounts.
Twenty seconds ago, there's a voucher number on there that is on the Squire system and the chequebook number, so there is a trail.
I know, but that's not the proper way of doing it.
Recommendations, due to the council's failure to comply with its responsibilities, I really don't have it, Mike, because I know you love this. Under, with its responsibilities under section one five one of the local government Act nineteen seventy-two, Oakham Town Council instructs its internal auditor to carry out a full audit of its council procedures for the period of two fifteen, two sixteen. Are you happy that that is your recommendation? Yes? Right, that's councillor Brooks's um, proposal, thank you. Um, can I have a second of that, please? Seconded by Sally Anne, proposed by Martin, seconded by Sally Anne, all those in favour? One, two. Two in favour, all those against?
I think it's shameful.
Five, six, seven, seven against, and abstentions, two abstentions.
So nobody's actually really interested in accounting, having it counted for properly, I think it's.